The League of Women Voters is proud to host this second night of the 2024 election forums, along with our partners, the American Association of University Women Capital Branch and Sierra Nevada Forums. Our planning committee consists of local volunteers who are committed to presenting informative, nonpartisan forums as a free public service to our community. These forums would not be possible without the generous support of our cosponsors, the Nevada Appeal and KUNR. Adam Trumbull, editor of the Nevada Appeal, has been a valued partner in coordinating forums throughout the years. We're so fortunate to have such top-quality local journalists to cover the issues that are important to northern Nevada. I encourage you all to subscribe to both the Nevada Appeal and KUNR to access the outstanding election coverage, as well as links to the YouTube videos of each of the 2024 forums. We also wish to acknowledge the fine work of our videographer, Jeff Mollville-Hill, I hope I got that right, Jeff, of Instant Image. We also appreciate the staff of the Brewery Arts Performing Hall for working hard to prepare the facility for this event. We sincerely thank the Wild Horse Children's Theater for graciously rescheduling its rehearsals so that we could use this stage. We're collecting donations for them out in the lobby, just look for the colorful unicorn pinata. In addition, we sincerely thank the candidates for being here tonight to answer questions and inform our community. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political action network. The League was formed in 1920 to encourage the active and informed participation of citizens in government and to influence public policy through education and advocacy. We have a long tradition of thorough research and study on issues related to health care, equity, government accountability, and environmental stewardship, as well as forums like this one featuring candidates for elected offices and the ballot questions. The League of Women Voters' overarching goal is making democracy work. There's nothing more important to this goal than having informed voters, and that's the purpose of these forums. Sadly, it is possible that misinformation and disinformation may be presented as fact during tonight's discussions, so it is up to each of us to sort out facts from misinformation. Tonight's forum will include candidates for district court judge, Carson City School District trustees in districts five and seven, and candidates for Nevada Assembly District 40. The format is as follows: Each candidate will give a five-minute opening statement, followed by a question-and-answer segment. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question, with 30 seconds for any follow-up. And then finally, each candidate will be allotted one minute for a closing statement. We're very pleased to have students from Carson High School stationed in the aisles. Maybe you could raise your hands? Thank you. They will collect questions from the audience. Please write one question per index card and address your questions to all participating candidates. We will screen the audience questions by these volunteers here to avoid duplication. And also, please note that we have a lot of people speaking tonight, and due to our time constraints, I might not be able to read every question that's submitted by the audience. We very much appreciate having a live audience, as it helps us achieve our goal of promoting an informed electorate. But again, in the interest of adhering to our tight schedule, we ask that you refrain from applause until the end of the forum. And then before we start, I do have a request for our candidates. We have people sitting way up in the back tonight, and we'd like everyone in the room, even those way in the back, to hear you. And we found in Monday's forum that it works best if you get yourself very close to the microphone, like I'm doing, and speak directly into it. Otherwise, the audience is going to be saying, "Can't hear you." Let's begin. We were going to begin with the district court judge candidates, but we do have a special guest here tonight, our county clerk recorder, Scott Cohn, who's going to tell us a little bit about the mail-in ballots that just went out.
You're good. Judy asked me to come and offer a quick explanation. We're going to be back here next Wednesday with the Secretary of State and the Deputy Chief of Elections, so the three of us can answer more detailed questions. But I wanted to give you a lowdown on the corrected ballot that is going to be mailed next week, probably Wednesday. Monday is a holiday. The Secretary of State, Attorney General, because it's a federal race, we had mislabeled the U.S. House race. The independent party candidate was labeled as a Dem. And should have been, and is an independent American Party. So we have to put out a corrected ballot. You're going to get a postcard that says, "We're putting out a corrected ballot." You're going to get an insert in the corrected ballot, what to do and how to do it. But rest assured, if you have voted your original ballot and don't want to do a corrected ballot, we're going to correct, we're going to collect, and we're going to count your original ballot. If you vote your corrected ballot, the A or the original ballot is automatically voided, so we can't count it twice. And we've got some systems and processes in place right now to make sure that is done correctly. There are sample ballots in the hallway, on the table. The sample ballot, those ballots are correct when you see that. But the benefit of the sample ballots on the hallway that you're going to be getting any day, because they're in the mail, you're going to be able to look at the seven state questions and the two Carson City questions with the explanation and the pro and the con. It's about a 72-page booklet that you're going to get. So just want to let you know, look out for your corrected ballot, look out for the sample ballot, do your homework, study. Early elections starts on October 19th and runs through Friday, November 1st. Election Day, we expect a huge turnout, and look forward to that. We've got more mail ballot drop boxes available for you to drop it off, City Hall, courthouse, and the tribal communities are going to participate in the election this year because they requested it. So ask us questions next week when we're here.
And we have Mr. Hole on Monday rather than Wednesday, next week. Thank you. So let's begin with district court judge candidates Mark Krueger and Kristin Lewis, who are right in the front row-ish, and we'll just take a few minutes for them to sit down, and we'll start with them. We'll start with opening statements, five minutes per candidate. And we do have a timer in the front row, and we're going to stick very closely to our schedule. So I might cut you off, but I'll try not to. Let's start with Kristin Lewis.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kristin Lewis. I'm currently the judge in the district court. And actually, before I get started further, I want to thank all of you for being here. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on tonight, and all the sponsors. This is a great opportunity. It's a great opportunity for me to explain to you why I'm in this position and why I'm running to retain this position. As your current district court judge, I began serving in January of this year. I was appointed by the governor after going through the judicial selection process when Judge Wilson retired. Judge Wilson had approximately 15 years of experience in the position when he retired. Currently, Judge Russell is also going to be retiring at the end of this month. That's 18 years of experience that's leaving. At this point in time, I have 10 years of experience in the position. I've also had the great opportunity to work with Judge Russell, to have a lot of questions that I have that come up answered, and to address the cases, the citizens who come to court on a daily basis. Our caseload numbers are significant. I would tell you that we have new filings this year, just in my department, Department Two, where I'm sitting, 600, over 600 cases, and that's just in Carson City. That's not including Story County. Those cases range from family law to civil cases, criminal cases, estate cases, real property, constitutional law, and elections cases. And when I say cases, they're not all set for trial. They're not all going to trial. Oftentimes, there's hearings, there's motions that need to be reviewed, things of that nature. But a file can also be five or six files, a box, two boxes, that have to be reviewed in order to go forward and address the case. Predominantly, the largest caseload we have is the family law cases. Those involve your divorce, your child custody, your child support cases. And there's a lot going on in those cases, a lot of issues at stake, people who care about where their children are going to be. I address those cases on a regular basis, and I have experience dealing with those cases. Prior to being in the district court position, I was at the juvenile court, and I presided over child welfare cases, where children are removed from their parents because of child neglect, abuse, could be as a result of substance abuse or mental health. I also presided over juvenile delinquency cases. And all of that foundation serves me well in the position where I'm addressing cases on a regular basis involving families. I have a good understanding of the resources that we have in this community. I presided, when I was at the juvenile court, over the mediation program. We use mediation as a tool regularly to address high conflict divorce cases and custody cases. I'm aware of the resources that we have to address co-parenting, and we regularly have parents attend that program. I'm aware of the programs that we have to address substance abuse and mental health issues, which significantly come up as well. I've also served as the justice of the peace. In Carson City, I was elected to that position in 2018. In that role, I regularly addressed criminal cases, civil cases, and family law cases involving protection orders. That experience assists me as well. As a district judge, I handle a busy docket, and all of the foundation that I've had as far as handling the cases at the justice court, in addition to search warrants, misdemeanor trials, sentencings, jury trials, I've had that experience. I was the first in Nevada to conduct a domestic battery jury trial that was required by the Supreme Court while I was in the justice of the peace position, and I conducted three of those, one of them even during COVID. While I was in the justice of the peace position, I was involved in working with stakeholders to address the implementation of new procedures, including the implementation of jury trials and making sure that we had the ability to go forward with jury trials, including addressing Marcy's Law and making sure that we were complying with victims' rights that are constitutional and making sure that victims are notified of hearings and have the ability to give input with respect to those hearings. I was also involved in addressing a critical issue that came up with regard to the Public Defender's Office when they were overwhelmed with cases and short-staffed. I spoke with stakeholders in our community to address that issue and to make sure that we had good representation so that people's rights weren't being violated. What I'm explaining as best I can is that I have well-rounded experience, having worked in all of those judicial roles, to address the important issues that come before the court, to work with the people, to connect them to services, and to address the issues that face this community.
Thank you. Mr. Krueger.
Thank you. I want to share a quick story with you. Recently, I want to share a quick story with you. Recently, I finished a presentation, and a woman came up to me, and she was very emotional. And she said, "I want to thank you." And she told me she runs a center that helps people, especially women who are pregnant or have children. And she said, "The opioid settlements and funding that I have spearheaded at the Attorney General's office are going to help a lot of people." And she handed me a booklet, this booklet. And as I opened up the pages, I saw all the faces of all the people that she had helped from the funding that I had helped to recover while at the Attorney General's office. These opioid settlements are bringing in over $1.1 billion, that's billion dollars, to the state of Nevada because of this company's deceptive and misleading practices. These settlements are making a huge difference in many lives. And I was able to help achieve this huge victory because of my experience in civil law and business law. I helped to negotiate and draft those agreements, those settlement agreements. For example, $285 million with Walgreens, $200 million with CVS, and $193 million with Teva. I also wrote the state laws that ensure that these funds are going to be used for programs and services to remediate the opioids epidemic that has claimed so many lives of Nevadans. Services and programs that work, like this one. Programs and services that save lives and restore hope. In addition to my civil experience, I prosecuted over 40 criminal jury trials, 40, over. I bring all this up because I'm the only candidate with the breadth of experience to fairly and efficiently deal with all of the different issues that come before the court, from family law to criminal law, civil law, and even business law. I'm the only candidate with the experience practicing in all of these areas. And as people from different walks of life and different needs come before the court, I'm the only candidate with the breadth and depth of experience to help all of these people, not just some of them. I'm Mark Krueger, and I'm asking for your vote for judge, district judge. And I'd also be remiss if I did not take a moment to thank the League of Women Voters of northern Nevada and the Sierra Nevada Forums for hosting this event tonight. And most of all, a huge, huge thank you to you, the voters, for attending tonight or watching this over a video. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to questions. We're happy to welcome these candidates for judge. We understand that it would be inappropriate for you to discuss cases that might come before your court. So these questions are more about learning about your background, your philosophy, your judicial philosophy, and your qualifications. In the words of Judge Russell, as he swore in Justice Burketta, "Leave your politics, your religion, your friends on the courthouse steps." So we will start with Ms. Lewis with the first question. And the way we do this is a little confusing at first, but you'll catch on. So the person who's answering the question gets a minute to answer it, and then the other person gets 30 seconds to add their thoughts. So you'll start with the first question. If Mr. Krueger has anything to say, he'll have 30 seconds, and then we'll move on to him, and it'll, I'll talk you through it. So Ms. Lewis, why do you want to be the district court judge? What do you bring to the position?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I'm already in the role serving as your district court judge. I'm in this position because I have background and experience working at the juvenile court, working at the justice court. I've dealt with all the issues as a judge, not just as a practitioner. I've seen those issues firsthand. Currently, I have a case that involves a parent with a child. That child is in the child welfare system, trying to work, the parent is trying to work a case plan for reunification with that child who was removed because of substance abuse issues with the parent. That adult parent is also involved in the criminal system and also has a custody case going in front of me. I have the background, based upon my judicial experience, to address those issues. Having worked in the juvenile court as well, I was able to learn from the parties that appeared in front of me the importance of bonding and attachment at young ages, and how important it is to direct parents where you can, the steps they need to take to reunify. That person is currently in our Western Regional Drug Court program and doing very well to reunify with their child.
Thank you. Mr. Krueger, you have 30 seconds for any follow-up comments on this question or to add your thoughts.
Thank you. I've been a practicing attorney for almost 25 years, and I've worked with judges, other attorneys, jurors, witnesses, law clerks, bailiffs, court clerks, court reporters, nearly every single individual that is interacting with the court, I've had interaction with. I've even had and started the program for Carson City to have a therapy dog for witnesses while they're testifying. My breadth of experience has been in practice in courts all throughout this state, sure, in Carson City. But I've been in all the rural counties just about. I've been in Clark County. I've been in federal court. I've practiced in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. I've been in bankruptcy courts throughout this nation. The breadth of experience that I have is incredible. I think my time's up.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Krueger. What standards for ethics and disclosure do you believe should be required for judges? That's for you.
Am I supposed to wait for this timer?
Oh.
Okay, thank you. I believe that the standards that are currently in place, the judicial ethics standards that are currently in place are sufficient and necessary.
Can I just interrupt you for a minute? I knew this would happen. You have two minutes, not one, for the answer to these questions.
Well, it's not going to require a lot of response time.
And sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
But you know, the current judicial ethics and standards are excellent. They're not only appropriate, they're required, and they're necessary. And the reason is, is because judges have to be fair and impartial. They cannot show bias. And so that's why sometimes when some of these questions are pointed out, we might not be able to answer up here today. And you're also going to hear a lot of overlap in Kristin's answers as well as mine because of that, of those judicial standards. So I think that's sufficient, I don't need all the time.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, you have two minutes to do that. Do you want me to repeat the question? What standards of ethics and disclosure do you believe should be required for judges?
Well, the standards of judicial ethics govern everything that we do. Judges are required to be independent. They're required to avoid what's called ex parte communications about a case. That means you can't have any conversations with one side and not the other side. As I handle cases on a regular basis, frequently I get communications sent to the court by the parties, whether it's in a criminal case, a family law case, or a civil case, from people who want to tell me their part or a family member. We send those communications back unopened with a letter indicating the reasons why we can't accept those communications, and that if they want the court to be aware of those communications, they need to come to court and present it in open court with both parties present, or they can do so through their attorneys. It's important that judges uphold the integrity of the position, that they're upstanding citizens in the community in terms of how they conduct themselves, that they don't engage in conversations about an active case, that they don't breach confidentiality of cases as well. Having presided at the juvenile court, I would tell you that most of the cases we handled over there were confidential. You can still talk about the issues to bring attention to the public as to how critical those issues are, but you can't talk about the actual cases. Additionally, having presided over the mental health court, the First Judicial District Court Mental Health Court for five years, and in the justice of the peace role, we have a staffing team that addresses the people who come into that program. But all of the things that we talk about within that staffing, as far as progress of our participants and how they're doing in the program and what their mental health issues are, those are all confidential. And so it's important, and I have a good understanding of the information that I have from the court, how important it is to a particular case and to a particular person, and that that information is to be used for what I'm deciding and what I'm doing in court.
Thank you. Now here comes the 30 seconds for the follow-ups. If either of you want to follow up what the other one said. I've got 30 seconds. Do you want to start, Mr.?
Sure, Krueger. Sure, I agree with everything that Kristin said. That's absolutely true, all of those statements. And we're both officers of the court. As officers of the court, we swear to take an oath to uphold the law, and I've done that, just like Kristin does. So the answers are all the same. You have to be fair, neutral, unbiased.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, would you like to add anything?
No, I would agree with that.
Okay, good. Next question. This would be for Ms. Lewis, starting. What do you think needs to be done to help litigants who have to defend themselves?
Are we talking about in a criminal case or other types of cases? It kind of depends. In a criminal case, if a person needs an attorney and cannot afford an attorney, then they wouldn't potentially qualify for the appointment of an attorney. And we have the Public Defender's Office, which was formerly the State Public Defender's Office. And I was involved in a change that brought about the County Public Defender's Office because our Public Defender's Office was understaffed, not going in a good direction at the time that there was a change in leadership. And so we went with the County Public Defender's Office to ensure that people are receiving proper representation. Anytime the state's bringing a charge against a person, on the other side, there needs to be adequate representation so that the system works effectively the way it should. As it concerns other types of litigation, in most civil cases, people are going to be in a position to hire an attorney. The only time that's different is in your family law cases. Oftentimes, people are pursuing divorce, child custody, child support cases, and they're self-represented because they can't afford to do so. I would let you know that there is, the State Bar has a website, which has all of the court forms for Carson City as well as the other jurisdictions. There was a group of judges who got together and put those forms together so that people could utilize those. It gives some case law. It walks them step by step through the process, and they're able to file their motions. We also have a set of procedures online that people can take a look at in order to address their case and comply with our rules and procedures. And I would tell you, every time I'm handling a case in court, if I have self-represented litigants, I take the time at the beginning of the case to walk them through the process, explain how things are going to go, and once I make a decision, I lay out the findings of fact that I'm making, the decision I'm making, and the reasons for that decision.
Thank you. Mr. Krueger.
Thank you. I would agree with what Kristin said. The only thing I would do is add to that a little bit. I'm also an adjunct professor at WNC, TMCC, and UNR, and I teach a criminal law and procedure class, and this topic comes up all the time. And Kristin's absolutely right. You've got to approach it as to whether or not it's a criminal case or a civil case. There's also some implications when there's family law. However, I've also done a lot of volunteering lawyering. And what I've realized is something that could really be helpful and beneficial to people that are indigent, particularly in a family law center. And if you see some of these places that have been established in other courts in larger cities, I think Carson's right at that time where we're right for it. And what I would propose, creating a lawyer-in-the-lobby type program, a self-help program, where, sure, there's some resources on the Nevada Supreme Court's website and things of that nature, but there really isn't a lot of educational material that's out there for Carson City residents. And there is no reason that that can't be implemented fairly inexpensively, to almost no money at all. Get volunteers to do the lawyer-in-the-lobby program, really provide some people with some guidance and help, since the courts can't do it necessarily, and the attorneys aren't going to without getting paid, without doing it voluntarily for pro bono. So I think there's an opportunity for it, and I believe that a lot of attorneys would relish doing this, and it would certainly help the residents.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, do you have any thoughts on that?
Just a brief response. There are some additional programs that we have in the community. There's VARN, which is Volunteer Attorneys for Rural Nevada, Nevada Legal Services. There are volunteer attorneys who assist people, depending upon the type of issue. And we also do have a program where there's a lawyer in the library, the Carson City Library, to assist people on a regular basis. Having it in the courthouse, there's really not the space for that, but there is the opportunity through the lawyer-in-the-library program.
Thank you. Mr. Krueger, anything else?
I disagree. I think there is space in the courthouse. I think there's plenty of opportunity to increase educational outreach programs to people, especially where they need it, which is at the courthouse, rather than making them trumble throughout Carson City to try to find a place. So I respectfully disagree and believe that programs such as lawyer-in-the-lobby would work exceptionally well, and I'm happy about getting those programs in place.
Thank you. Now, the next question, we will start with Mr. Krueger. What do you consider to be the greatest challenges facing our judicial system, and how would you address them?
So if I might ask a clarifying question. If it's challenges for the judicial system as a whole in Nevada, I think we'll leave that one and table it for another forum, perhaps the Nevada Supreme Court Justice Forum. For the actual First Judicial District Court, I certainly can address that. I think one of the biggest challenges is electronic filing. And I know that there's been a movement to work with the state to try to get electronic filing in place. That's not acceptable. We need to get it done, and we need to get it done quickly. That also includes increasing access to the court. People don't understand. They're legitimately intimidated when they come to court, understandably so. If you don't have to interact with the court and you end up going to the court, it can be a very nerve-wracking experience. I remember a long time ago, when I was a law clerk, jurors were coming into the courthouse, and they were looking around, "Where do we go? Where do we go?" And I remember walking back to the office and printing up a sign that said, "Jurors meet at this office." And later, the buildings and grounds took my paper sign, and they put it into a metal sign and put it there. That's a simple outreach, right? It's not hard to do. So getting those kinds of education and programs and services, just guidance to people, makes a lot of sense. The other problem that's really thwarting the court is we don't have a business court. I mean, we have, in Story County, the largest, largest business park in the nation. It's time to get a business park, business court instituted. The other thing we have is severe mental health and problems with the drug court. The other thing we have is severe mental health and problems with the drug court. And I think it's time to reevaluate the drug court. Instead of having new dealers meet new users, and new users meet new dealers, let's put it up. Let's figure it out. Let's evaluate better and get them started on a path back to recovery, which is the whole point of these specialty courts. It's not to just hook them up so they can go. And I remember a grandma of a case that I think literally had a kid go clean in a program, came back to the court, went to drug court, sent me an email and said, "Thank you for doing everything you could for my grandson, but the problem is, the drug court failed him." That's unacceptable, and it can change. So those are a few things I highlighted more on my website.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Well, there's a lot to say about those three things, and I want to address them all. I don't disagree with Mr. Kruger in the sense that I want people to feel comfortable coming to court. We have signage. We have our marshals down at the front as people come through security to point them in the right direction, and I hear them do that on a regular basis. So I'm hoping signage really isn't the issue. As far as e-filing is concerned, we all would like to have e-filing. It's a convenience, mainly to the attorneys, but also to the parties to some extent. E-filing comes at a significant cost, though. 1.4 million for the county. If we collaborate with the other jurisdictions in the administrative office of the court, which we have been working to do, considering the case management system that we already have, we are working to put together an e-filing program that would happen by 2026, is my understanding. And that would be at a significantly reduced cost to the county. Considering that money comes out of the county budget, there's a lot more we could do with that 1.4 million. As a judge, I sit in the courthouse on a regular basis. We supervise the juvenile court, and we all work together collaboratively. We have needs that exceed e-filing. Currently, in our juvenile system, we have a detention facility where there's not enough beds for the kids that we have in that facility. It requires restructuring. The other part I wanted to address was a business court. We don't have enough business cases to support or warrant a business court at this point in time. However, if that becomes an issue, I certainly support considering that option. As it relates to our drug court and our specialty court programs, Carson City is fortunate to have a misdemeanor treatment court program, which addresses substance abuse at the misdemeanor level, a mental health court program, which addresses mental health issues and co-occurring substance abuse issues. It's been in effect since 2005. We have the Western Regional Drug Court Program that's been in existence for approximately 20 years, I believe. And all of the parties that are involved in staffing and addressing those courts, and I've had that experience, receive regular training, regular updates, regular reviews from the National Center for Treatment Courts, and consistently change their ways of addressing how participants are monitored and supervised. Those are our highest supervision programs. And granted, you're dealing with people who have some criminal histories, so there's going to be problems initially, but they're typically caught very quickly, and our goal is to continue to improve those.
Thank you. I'm going to skip the answer part of it because we're sort of running out of time, so I'm going to ask a couple of audience questions, and then we'll move on to the final statement. I also have a handful of audience questions, and I've got time for about two of them. So I'm going to limit it, as Mr. Kruger said, to questions that are, you mentioned earlier, questions that are actually about the court system in our county. So, starting with Mr. Kruger then, consider pros and cons of having a night court. Any comments on that?
Sure. Night court would be something that, generally speaking, would be more appropriate for the justice court if that was something that would be needed, because night court, generally speaking, has a more faster caseload, looking at misdemeanors and things of that nature. Given the numbers that Kristen cited, and I haven't verified those numbers, but given the numbers that cited, there may be a need and a desire to have a night court. I worked for, clerked for a judge at one time who even held court on a weekend. I'm not opposed to doing that in certain cases either. Certainly want to be considerate of the people, if it's a jury trial, of their time, whether or not they want to come. Sometimes they may want to come to a court on a weekend, or may want to do a jury trial at night rather than in the daytime. Save their jobs and give them an opportunity to just sit for a few hours. There's a lot of different options there, and there's certainly a lot of things that could be considered. And this would be something that I would be open to considering and looking to. I come to the table with a very open mind, and, you know, as an open mind, look to other ways. And I'm just going to go back and address it, since I have my 30 seconds, I'll take it for a second. You know, we could address different ways of funding that program for electronic filing. And certainly, a public-private partnership is something that's not outside the world of understanding, or even an option that could be explored. It absolutely is. So night court could work, but it really is what the people that interact with the court would be comfortable with. If they're comfortable coming in the evenings, then I'm all for it. If they're not, then it might not be something worth pursuing. But the one thing that we always need to maintain is an open door and consider these issues. Whoever asked that question, I love it, because I think that is the kind of question we should be asking. What other things can we do to make it better and easier for people to access the court and to actually get some justice?
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. I agree it's important to have the opportunity to access the court, for people to be able to come, have their cases heard, and have decisions made, whether it's a traffic ticket or a misdemeanor trial. The challenge is, is that you've got staff, judges, everybody who has to be available to be there. Right now, I would explain to you that we actually frequently hold court or hold hearings, even on weekends, because the last legislative, or a couple legislative sessions ago, they implemented what's called 48-hour hearings. Those hearings have to be conducted within 48 hours of a person being arrested and have that arrest reviewed by a judge with a defense attorney, a prosecutor, and court staff available, as well as the jail. And so there are weekend hearings that are already being held remotely, but with people also at the courthouse taking care of those hearings. It creates challenges in terms of salaries, overtime, all of those things. I'm not closed to any options that we can consider, but I'm not sure how you're going to conduct jury trials and things of that nature utilizing night court. We have an awful lot of opportunities for people to make payment arrangements and take care of things by way of email, and pay their fines and fees online. We even have had an alternative dispute resolution program that was set up so that people could address their civil traffic sites online, and we got very little utility out of that because most people didn't write in to do that. So the other challenges, we have not just the court staff, not just the judges, but you have marshals, you have building security. All of those things have to be open and available and present in order to conduct court.
Thank you. And I'm going to make this one the last question. I think it's a good one to end with, because maybe, like me, a lot of people in the audience aren't really familiar with our judicial system in Carson City as we should be. So the question is this, and I'll start with Ms. Lewis, and you can add to what she says, because really, it's a question for both of you. What specialty courts does Carson City currently have, and who do they serve?
Thank you. I just addressed that a little bit ago with respect to one of the questions. As I mentioned, we have a misdemeanor treatment court. I believe that was started in 2016, I want to say, and that's at the misdemeanor level to address substance abuse issues with regard to people who have misdemeanor crimes. There's a First Judicial District Court Mental Health Court Program that was started in 2005 by Judge Tetro. It's under the First Judicial District. I presided over that program for five years as Justice of the Peace. The way it works is, it can be for a person who has a misdemeanor charge, a gross misdemeanor charge, or a felony charge, to address their mental health and oftentimes co-occurring substance abuse problems. We can also take people who have committed a crime in Lyon County, Douglas County, Washoe County. If they reside in Carson City, then we address those cases. And it's monitored by the Department of Alternative Sentencing, which is another branch that we have to supervise pretrial conditions, which include having no alcohol, drugs, drug paraphernalia, search and seizure, drug testing, regular supervision at the residence, compliance with mental health counseling, and substance abuse treatment. So they're highly monitored programs. We also have the Western Regional Drug Court Program, which has been in place, I believe, for approximately 16 or 20 years, and that's to address people at the felony and gross misdemeanor level who have substance abuse addiction problems. And that Western Regional Program encompasses Carson City, Washoe County, Lyon County, Douglas County, Hawthorne, and there's, Judge Schumacher is the person who's currently presiding over that program. She has over 30 years of experience in substance abuse training as it relates to the specialty court program. All of the people who have been part of those staffing teams also have similar training. I have over 20 years of training in specialty court programs. The juvenile court has a juvenile drug court and Safe Babies Program to help address substance abuse issues as it relates to juveniles. And then we also have the DUI diversion program for anybody who's had a third offense DUI. They can participate in that program if they successfully complete it, which can take three to five years of consistent treatment and supervision, then they will no longer have that third offense on their record unless they commit a new DUI offense.
Thank you. Mr. Kruger, would you like to add to that about what courts we have in Carson City?
Sure, thank you. That was a great question, and kudos to Kristen, that was an excellent answer. Those are certainly all the programs. To a degree, we also use the Veterans Court Program up in Reno as well. There's a couple other minor programs, too. But anybody who's worked as a prosecutor or a defense attorney, generally speaking, has a very good understanding of the types of specialty courts. The important takeaway here, and the reason, I think, for the question is that, are we in support of the specialty courts? There's no doubt about it. Kristen's in support of it. I'm in support of specialty courts. We all want to help people, and that's one of the things that specialty courts do. They are designed to be able to target specific issues, such as mental health issues, addiction, which oftentimes cross over, by the way. And they are meant to try to address those addictions, address those issues, and give that person a chance to get off of the life of crime. And that's really what drives a lot of the low-level crimes, a lot of the theft crimes, a lot of burglary. A lot of these types of crimes are driven by an addiction, a mental health issue. Sure, you've got your heinous crimes, and those crimes deserve a whole nother type of punishment and need to be addressed a different way. But these specialty courts are something special, and they need to be expanded, they need to be grown. But one thing I've noticed is they need to be readapted, reevaluated constantly. And yes, Kristen's right about the education and the increase in education, but there's always this closed mindset that happens around any program, and people get complacent with them. But I'm bringing to the table an open mindset, to really look at these programs. What's working? What's not? And if it is working, what can we do to do it better? I did this at the DA's office when I was there. I brought in electronic discovery. Nobody's, they all told me that, "You can't do it, Mark, you can't do it." I did it. Not only did I do it, DA's office still uses it. What works? What's working? What can we do better?
Thank you. Now, we have two minutes for each of you for your closing remarks, and starting with Mr. Kruger.
Thank you. I've really enjoyed being here tonight. It's given me an opportunity to really speak to you guys from my heart. And that's how I practice law, from my heart. I've done it every single time. It's why I go into over 40 criminal jury trials, because I know the perpetrator did it, and it's my job to convince 12 people unanimously that what I know, they know. And I use that through the evidence and the facts. And I think tonight has been a good example of me being, showing you the experience that I have. I've served our community. I've worked in the Nevada Attorney General's Office. I've worked in multiple district attorney's offices. I've been a person responsible for keeping bad people off the streets. I prosecuted over 40 criminal jury trials, everything from drug to murder, capital crimes, crimes against children, crimes against the elderly. I've served as a teacher. I taught at the Peace Officer Standards and Training Academy. I currently teach at WNC, TMCC, and UNR. I have successfully represented the public interest in numerous civil cases, and particularly the ones that I talked about, spearheading the state's opioid litigation, bringing in over $1.1 billion to help families restore hope, save lives. That's important. I've practiced in numerous federal and district courts in Nevada. I've practiced in all kinds of courts, all throughout Nevada. I've drafted state laws. I've drafted county laws. I've drafted city laws. I've drafted thousands of legal documents. I've even been a contributing author to a published book that is currently still used to teach about prosecution of crimes against children. And as a district judge, I will bring the wisdom I've gained through my experience to the bench. And I am the candidate that our community needs, with the experience our community needs.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. I'll start where Mr. Kruger started. I have more than 25 years of experience as an attorney. I've worked as a defense attorney. I've worked as a prosecutor, including the Assistant District Attorney here in Carson City. I also have civil experience, and I worked in family law. But more important than that, I have judicial experience. And that matters, because we're having two judges who have left the position or leaving the position, and there will be nobody with a judicial experience. I have 10 years of judicial experience at the juvenile court level, at the Justice of the Peace, and now as your district judge. You may think it's only 10 months of judicial experience in the district court, but it's more than 600 cases that I've handled so far. Everything from family law, all different types of cases, to election cases, constitutional challenges which are significant, civil cases, estates, probates, real property. These cases are difficult. The issues in them are complex and difficult. It takes time to prepare for these cases. It takes time in court to work with the litigants and make sure you get to the real issues in the case. It's important to listen and understand. It's important to be able to encourage participants when you're dealing with a family law case as to how they should handle those cases, that it's really about the child and not about them. I have that understanding, having worked with families at the juvenile court, now at the district court. I have the experience as it relates to the criminal cases and conducting jury trials, not just presenting them. It's different doing it from the side of a judge. It's important to have judicial experience. It's important to understand the impact of these cases on the community, on the people who come in front of the court. I have that perspective. It's a balanced perspective. It's not one-sided. I also have worked with all of the different programs, from the Mental Health Court Program, the Western Regional Drug Court Program. I know the services that we have available in this community, and I'm able to connect people and families and children to those services in order to facilitate a good result. I thank you for listening today, and I would appreciate your vote in retaining me for district court judge.
And thanks very much to the two of you for coming tonight.[1623.13][1623.13][applause] Okay, school board candidates. Rebecca Roberts, we, there is another school board candidate who is Rebecca Roberts. She's running for trustee in District 2. She's unable to be here tonight due to a scheduling conflict. So we have candidates for school district trustee in District 5, which is Ashley Sausado and Mike Walker, and then candidates for school district trustee in District 7, which is John Henley and Michelle Pedersen. So I'm going to be going from left to right. So we'll start with opening statements. So Ms. Sausado, would you like to start, since you're on the left, and it's five minutes per candidate?
Okay, so this thing's working. That's nice. So my opening statement, my name's Ashley Sausado, and I have a six-year-old son. So I'm new to this school board and the way that it works and things like that, but I'm definitely interested in learning. I want to be a part of the solution. I want to be a part of being resourceful. So with that, I can relate to some of the issues parents are facing, so I can get some answers, do some footwork, and do what I can to help. That's what I have. That's my opening statement.
Thank you. Mike?
Good evening. I'm Mike Walker, and I'm running for reelection to Carson City School Board in District 5. So I have had two terms on the board, and I just want to give you a little bit about my background. So I started in Carson City as a teacher, teaching third grade at Sealager Elementary School. And I know many of you will be celebrating with Sealager this weekend at the annual Pumpkin Patch. Spent many years coordinating and organizing that community event, and proud to do so. About 10 years into, seven years into my teaching career, I went into school administration. And I worked as the dean of students at Carson Middle School, and did that for about four years and learned a lot. That was a challenging job. And after about four years, I went and joined the little guys at Fritsch Elementary School. And, you know, one of the things, I just always was so proud to be a teacher in Carson City. This is a great educational system, and... This is a great educational system and you know, I just think they have always represented us well. After a few years, I wanted to try something a little bit different and I went and worked at the Department of Education. I worked in the Title I department overseeing schools with high rates of poverty. And I was the state's coordinator of the Education of Homeless Children and Youth or McKinney-Vento. And through that work, I worked statewide with school districts in making sure that all students were able to access education, regardless of if they had barriers where they didn't have birth certificates or vaccination records. We helped them get those records and get into school. When they had housing issues, we helped them get to resources. And that brought me to my work with Food for Thought in this community. And I spent several years as the president of that nonprofit, providing nutritious meals to students living with, you know, that needed food at home, basically. We also ran a summer food program for several years where we would set up lunch in the park and kids would come and we would give them meals. So that's rewarding work and I'm currently still on the Board of Directors for that organization. So I have gone back to work in the school system. I missed working with the kids a lot. So I'm currently a school administrator in a neighboring district. And I'm also a school trustee here. And so through my work here, I've also, I've held various leadership roles in our school district, but also within the state. So I'm active in the Nevada Association of School Boards. I'm actually the president-elect. And in that capacity, I have mentored new trustees. I have led mentoring and training sessions for newly elected trustees from across the state and coordinated with all of us to advocate for advanced funding and a better educational system statewide for all students. And that has also led me to some national work. So through my work with NASB, I'm also working with the Nevada Association of School Boards. We will actually be hosting the Pacific Region Meeting starting Friday up in Lake Tahoe. And so we'll be coordinating with school board leaders from Alaska, Washington, Oregon, Nevada, obviously. And we will be advocating for education. One of the things I've seen through that work is that even though we're so spread apart, the issues are the same in a lot of our places. And we need to come together and make sure that our educational system is the best it could be for all of our students. Thank you.
Hello. Just wanted to say thank you first for everybody for attending and being here for this very important event. I'm going to kind of explain who I am, why I decided to run for the board and why I'm here today. I'm a graduate of the Carson City School District. I was a teen parent when I graduated. My first daughter was born when I was 15 and luckily I was able to, through the support of my parents and through the support of some programs in the community, continue my education, graduate high school. And I can kind of explain even further that my oldest daughter is actually now an instructor. She's an English teacher at Carson Middle School here in Carson because she graduated from UNR, graduated from the Carson City School District and just continued to move on through that success. And so I have a lot of love for this school district, a lot of love for this community. And I really appreciate what the Carson City School Board has done to maintain the stability in this district. You know, I think it goes without saying that there's a lot of things that are going on throughout the surrounding communities and regardless of what people's political beliefs are, I think the stability is the most important thing that we've been able to maintain in this school district here in town. Because what matters is the kids that are impacted by these decisions in these districts, the families and the community in this district. Additionally, I think one of the biggest issues kind of hitting our district right now is, you know, the mental health of our students and our faculty and how that relates to the programs in the area. We have just recently, I'm sure everybody's seen the news, a lot of threats of school shootings by students and things like that. And luckily, the district has done a fantastic job and actually even school board members have done a fantastic job being at those schools, assuring parents that things are okay and working with community stakeholders and their partners in the law enforcement community to make sure that the students know that they have a safe place to go and be educated every day. So I'm really proud of our district. I'm really proud of Carson City in general. I'll say a little bit more about myself. I am a 20-year law enforcement professional. I'm actually currently still employing law enforcement. I'm a warden of the Northern Nevada Correctional Center here in town. I don't really want to get into that position, but I will say my theory is I would love to put myself out of business. I would love to solve this problem before it comes down to me. I would love these children to be able to stay out of my system that I work in and be provided for beforehand, connect them with the services in the community, get those community partner involvement and just create a better atmosphere for these kids to succeed. I personally, obviously, had my own troubles, my own situations and concerns. And luckily, I have many teachers that have stepped in over the years and really helped me out. One, I will specifically mention, Ms. Sarah Adler. She no longer teaches in the district, but a lot of people do know her. She works in the community quite a bit. And I have many good stories that I'll say when I have a little bit more time. But I just wanted to say I have a passion for education also. I should probably mention that my wife also works for the Carson City School District at Sealager Elementary School. My son graduated from Carson City School District and he's attending UNR currently. And my youngest daughter is currently attending the Carson City School District for at least another, you know, six years or so. So I have a vested interest in this community. I have, you know, no desire to leave. This is a beautiful community. I love what we do here in Carson City and I just want to keep that going and keep the stability in our district. And so that's why I was running for Carson City School Board and that's a little bit about myself.
All right. I'll better put these on so I can see my notes. All right. Good evening. Thank you everyone for coming out to support this forum tonight. I really appreciate all the effort that goes into putting on events like this so that people could come out and engage in this way. My name is Michelle Peterson. It's Peterson. It's just spelled different. But I'm running for school board, trustee seven. I've been a resident of Carson City for just over 20 years. My husband and I came here to attend UNR, but those plans were immediately derailed by the waterfall fire, which prompted a major pivot in our path when my husband joined the fire service instead. We clicked in groups. We've been a part of the fire family here in Northern Nevada for nearly 20 years. He's a captain with East Fork Fire down in Douglas. We raised four kids in Carson City. I've got Luke, Noel, and Jocelyn and Jack. Their ages 15, 17, 19, and 21. They all went through the Carson City School System. The younger two are still at Carson High. The older two graduated recently with one of them taking advantage of the jumpstart program so he was able to graduate with his associate degree. When our oldest entered the school system, he was a little pre-K kid at Mark Twain Elementary School. We were young. We didn't really know what our parts as the parents of a school student would look like. But that quickly changed when we received a letter in the mail. I don't remember all the details of that letter as we were still kind of new on the scene. But essentially, it said that Mark Twain had failed to meet certain standards of measure for more consecutive years than was allowed. And because of that, they were required to offer us a transfer to Boarderwick or Fritch, including busing, or we could choose to stay. My husband and I talked it over and rather than jumping off the sinking ship, we both decided that this was a chance for us to step up and find a way to help heal that ship, to grab a bucket and start bailing water. How could we help? What could we do to be a part of the solution rather than running from it? And that was the start of 17 years of daily presence in the schools. The ways I've been involved are countless and varied, from small things like facilitating the school's photo day, assisting with flu shots, middle school mock interviews, going on field trips, serving in classrooms, to much bigger projects like creating and running lunchtime intramural leagues, weekly spirit day competitions, sitting on a committee to choose uniforms or textbooks for the year. And now I serve as the registrar at Carson High for the Safe Grad Boosters. When it was time to get the kids started in sports, we started with Carson City Little League where we were told that our son missed the age cutoff by two weeks. But they said, if you guys are willing to coach, we'll make an exception. So of course I said yes because I'm a sucker. But that was the start of a 15-year relationship with that league. And I quickly found myself very engaged and serving on the board, eventually being elected as the league president. I spent a total of eight years as a board member there, six of those years as president and vice, overlapping with nine years as a team manager and a head coach. While there, I managed a board of 20, a league of 650 kids, a volunteer staff of 150, a paid crew of umpires, a sponsorship portfolio of 60 local businesses who gave back to our teams, game schedules, snack bar inventory, field maintenance, including judging, juggling the uncertainty and chaos of trying to run a league through COVID. We pushed through several large improvements, including new scoreboards on all six of the upper fields, new dugouts, sun chases and wind screens on the T-ball fields, and more. I've served in leadership positions in many groups that foster an environment of learning and growth for our youth. In addition to my 15 years with Little League, I've had 13 years with Youth Theater Carson City as their parent volunteer coordinator, 17 years of daily presence in our schools, 15 years of leadership with youth groups in my church, four years on the USBC bowling board serving the kids' programs, 13 years of coordinating fire safety presentations in the elementary schools, two years as a Safe Grad Registrar, many years as a Cub Masters for my boys' scout troops, and so much more. I don't just live here. I'm a member of the community and I proudly take and honor all the responsibility that that implies. There are so many aspects of our community that can only thrive when people step up in supportive roles. And I'm eager to step up into this much larger arena and to continue doing what I've always done and that is ensuring that our rising generation has a protected environment to learn, grow, develop, and excel, a place where they can gain confidence in the capacity to lead and where they can all find success. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to questions and I'm going to hold them to two minutes per candidate because there's a lot of good questions and not very much time. So starting with the next person down the line, that would be Mike Walker. Our secondary schools have implemented cellphone pouches. What would you say to a parent who calls you and says they don't think their child should have to follow that rule?
Well, I actually had a meeting with a parent that was questioning that and his daughter. And you know, and she had great arguments because she told me she was never a student who was in, she was never in trouble. She didn't violate the cellphone policy, but she didn't want to give it up and so she didn't think it was fair. So you know, gosh, I see in the audience is Mrs. Maples who taught kindergarten for me at Fritch. And we had this conversation 10 years ago, you know what I mean? And it's, cellphones have really changed the way that our children are interacting with the world. It's impacting what's happening in the classrooms. Our kindergartners are coming and they're used to being able to get instant gratification from their every win and request. They have more power in those little devices than, you know, growing up, we ever had available. We had to wait our turn for encyclopedias sometimes. So it has changed the way the world works. And as social media has really taken off, it has impacted the mental health of our students. There's some real concerning research about the algorithms and the types of exposures they lead our students to and they have become a distraction. And so the outcry that I was expecting from this policy didn't come. At the end of my conversation with the family in which I reminded them, they need to go talk to the principal. They need to be part of the solution. And we are hearing great things from kids who are amazed that they're talking to each other at lunch and getting to know their friends. So I don't see it as a bad thing. I think that that is sound policy and I think that our community, a lot of our students, and probably all of our teachers are in favor of.
Thank you. Mr. Henley?
Ditto. No. No, it's actually interesting because obviously I have a child that's still affected by this policy and she has basically said almost the same exact thing. She was really disappointed at first that I wouldn't have access to my phone at all times and everything like that. But in reality, she has found very similar experiences that they actually are able to talk at lunch and converse and do these other pro-social activities that don't require this electronic device in our pockets, you know? Additionally, there's actually been news stories from parents that were initially concerned, but what they realized finally was that, oh, what I'm generally doing is just joy-sticking my child into, okay, can you do this after school? Oh, wait, wait, also this and then this and this. And in reality, it helps everybody plan. It helps the child focus on school, which is what they're supposed to be there for, learning and being educated. I think it's a great decision and again, I think the district handled it very well. The teachers and actually the instructors of each school handled it fairly well and the superintendent and the administration handled it very well. They're very good about communicating, which is the most important thing, I think. As long as you communicate with your stakeholders and your people in the community, you'll find that yes, you might have a couple people that are upset, but if you sit and talk with them and have discussions, open forums, you can really swash a lot of these issues and resolve them before they become much larger issues in your community. I think this solves this problem, or this solves not just this problem, but many other additional problems that were caused by cellphones and social media and other things. So I think it's a great policy and I think you just talk to the staff, talk to the students and talk to the families and that's the best way to solve all these issues.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
Peterson.
Sorry, Peterson.
Ditto. Can I try that again? So I've got two kids in the high school right now as well and I've heard nothing but great things from them about this program. One of my friends is a kindergarten teacher and she was telling us they've got some behavioral problems in some students that are a little bit of a challenge. And one of her little kindergartners, when she was expressing concern to that kid's parents about some behavior, the mother's response was, well, if you would just let him have an iPad in class, he would sit still. That made me kind of sad for that child. But not just for that child, but it's a problem universal among not just kids, but among us adults as well. Cellphones are an incredible tool. They are an absolutely incredible tool. They have a purpose. They have so much in them that we use daily. But there's also so much in there that we can be distracted by and ways to abuse them, as with any tool, when it's taken advantage of and the addiction gets a hold of you. I was very in favor of the cellphone pouches. And I had a lot of people, because campaigning, they would ask me about it and some of them would express some concern and complaints about it. And I would say, you know, you have to start tight. You have to start with the maximum level of strictness with them. And then as you move along, you can wiggle it a little bit and loosen up where you find places to have that room. But you can't start loose and then just slowly tighten and tighten and tighten because people will complain every tightening spot along the way. But if you start tight and then find areas that you can give a little, I think that's super appropriate and something that should be done and reevaluated. I know some of my kids' teachers are more strict on the policy than others. Some of them allow the kids to unlock and use their phones as rewards and incentives in class and sometimes as tools in class. Some that does digital media and so they need it for lighting and for videos and editing and things like that. So you know, as far as the parents question about not liking it, there's a lot of rules in life that we don't necessarily love, but we got to do it anyway.
Thank you. Ms. Sausado?
Well, my son is six, so I don't have to have this problem unfortunately. But he will have this issue when he goes into middle school and high school. I will have to educate myself on this. I haven't heard about the policy for the cellphone pouch, but I'm interested in learning more and what's happening inside of the schools of middle schools and high schools and things like that. That's what I have right now.
Thank you. The next question, which is doing our round robin here, will start with Mr. Henley and it is about school safety. What measures would you advocate for to enhance school safety? And how would you balance the need for security with maintaining a welcoming and supportive environment for students?
I'm glad you asked that question because obviously as a law enforcement professional, you know, I'm going to err on the side of caution, safety and security. But I also want to... to realize that nobody wants to go into a school environment, nobody probably thinks they should go into a school environment and have to see effectively an armed officer at the front gate, you know, before you enter, you know, that's disconcerting. You don't see those in a lot of other countries and things like that, so that's a whole other discussion. But I think what we've done in this area and in this community, partnering with the Carson City Sheriff's Office, partnering with the, and having the school resource officers in the schools, is fantastic. They receive special training, they, you know, they interact with the children in a much different way and a much more pro-social positive way, and that really allows the students to have that positive educational environment and not have that fear, you know? Because obviously, there's terrible news stories out there. I mean, there's the school shootings and those concerns like that. We also have other policies in this Carson City School District where, you know, they have the locked doors, the, you know, the protective entry at each school and stuff like that, where, you know, you don't even have to, you don't even think about it when you're entering, but those are protected areas and that's intentional. I think we just continue those kind of policies and make sure that we partner with our law enforcement professionals in the community to ensure the safety and provide that safety for the educators as well and the students. Again, the Carson City School District is a bastion of like stability and common sense policies, and if we just pay attention to the other policies around the world and around the country and look at those, because that's what the board is really for, is to foster policies and foster the district operation and develop those policies to community standards and keep moving forward, and look at the other policies around the country and maybe make tweaks and changes that benefit the community here in Carson City.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson.
I think we're really lucky in Carson City School District. We have a fantastic relationship with the Carson City Sheriff's Office, and we have really great SROs, the Student Resource Officers, that circle through the schools. And they, they develop a really great relationship with the students, especially at the high school level. One of my favorites last year at Safe Grad was the SRO, one of the go-karts there at the raceway where we had it was decked out like a police car, and he would pull people over and he'd tuck into corners and go on high-speed chases around, and you just have walls of kids just cheering, not for their peers, but cheering for the SRO to catch them. And I think that relationship is essential to make them tangible. They're not just this looming presence, but they are people that you can interact with and people that you can approach and people that you can express concerns to. When you walk into any of the schools ten years ago, you can just let yourself right in and walk in, but in the last several years, there have been very big measures taken. All of the schools now have a double entry where you have to, if you've had to check a kid out of the high school recently, you go through one set of doors into a foyer, and you cannot go beyond that, and it's the same in the other schools. The doors are all locked and will not unlock without a push button on the other side. You have to show ID. You don't just show ID, they scan your ID. So, they have your driver's license and your photo and your information. I feel that our schools are actually quite secure. Are there ways for bad to happen? Absolutely. A determined person can cause chaos anywhere they choose, but the overall vibe in the schools that I feel and that my children feel is a safe environment, and I'm thankful for all those that put in the effort to make sure that we have that for them.
Thank you. Ms. Sosa.
Gosh, you know, I'm so new at all of this, the schools and the districts and things like that. My son is first grade, so I'm getting to learn all of the different things, and yes, in the recent years, there have been double entrances, and I have to go and check out my son, and I have to go through a door, and I have to scan my ID. Even though they know me there, I still have to show all of my identification to check out my own son, which is good. I don't have any issues with that, so they know it's me instead of somebody impersonating me or trying to get to my son, things like that. You know, being in this position, trying to help the board and as a parent, helping and understanding this parent side of it, I'm definitely wanting to educate myself a little more on the safety of the schools.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll begin with Ms. Peterson.
So, could I give my input? Are you forgetting about me?
Yeah, I must be getting tired. Yes, please.
So, you know, as a trustee, I actually served on the district's safety committee, and so, obviously, there are a lot of provisions that are put into place to ensure the safety of our schools, our students, our staff. A lot of them are confidential because you don't want to put that information out that could be used against the people we're trying to protect. We have spent millions of dollars on our relationship with the Sheriff's Department with those resource officers, and I agree with Ms. Peterson about the effectiveness of not only that, having that safe person in the building, but also those positive relationships that we're building between our students and our law enforcement. And so, you know, it goes down to the safety measures, secure campuses, the Raptor system, which is where we scan the IDs to make sure that we don't have children predators coming into our buildings and ensure the safety of everyone involved. But also, there's something else we need to look at in our society, and we need to put a stop to this because this should not be happening, and we have to, we're prepared, we have drills, and what you don't know in an elementary school, even when kids know it's a drill, they're scared. And you have to have the talk that we do this in case there's an emergency. And it's sad that they live in a world where that could be a reality. And so, we need to work with mental health, we need to continue to have that strong relationship with law enforcement. One of the strengths of our board is, we have a lot of experience. We have law, retired law enforcement, we have probation officers, we have educators, we have lawyers, we have civil engineers. So, we have enough people with enough experience in a lot of different areas that when we have these discussions with the school district, we could help find solutions, and that makes us strong.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Peterson, the next question, we start with you. What strategies would you like to see implemented to address budget constraints while maintaining or improving the quality of education?
Well, this, this is definitely a I-don't-know-until-I-know kind of a question. I have not served on the board, obviously, and so I don't have access to a lot of the policies and procedures and what is available and what some of the strategies may be. I do understand that our budget comes from the legislature, and whatever they give us is what they give us, and we have to figure it out and make it work. The budget gets settled before, the school district budget gets settled before the legislator has even told them how much they're going to receive. And so, it's an interesting game of figuring out and revisiting and adjusting and squeezing and pulling from different pockets to make other pockets work when money is needed. There are committees and crews and people who are trained in grant writing and seeking out resources and finding money where we can, where we can get it to make sure that things get done. Again, I don't, I don't fully understand it because I haven't spent time on that seat yet, but I know it's definitely different. Little League, when we needed money, we'd go up to a community sponsor and say, hey, will you sponsor our team for five hundred dollars? I don't think we can have a similar approach with the school board. It's a little bit different, a lot bigger numbers, but I definitely look forward to learning it and figuring out how to be a part of making those dollars work.
Thank you. Ms. Sosa.
I would have to educate myself on a lot of that. I'm not too sure at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
So, you know, this is a challenging field that we spend a lot of time on in the school board, and so, one of the, one of the great things about Carson City is we have a very strong educational program, and our educators are innovative, and they are focusing on problem solving and creating tomorrow's leaders. And so, I think that really the investment we put towards our career and technical education, we have eleven paths that are allowing kids to pursue careers that they want to go into while attaining their education and also contribute to our community. Through those partnerships, working with our local businesses and our local leaders, that could help with some of that funding. What we can't change is how much money is allocated towards our school districts per pupil currently. Depends on the study you look at. We're either rated forty-eighth in the nation or forty-sixth. So, currently in Nevada, our students are, we get eleven thousand dollars a student, whereas in other nations, other states, the median is either sixteen thousand or nineteen thousand. Again, there's different studies out there, but that's quite a bit of difference. And we're not going to be able to fill that hole right away. The last legislative session, they started kind of filling in those deficits, but we as trustees, working with our superintendents, working with our teachers and our community, have to continue to advocate for better funding of our school system because we should not just be in the middle, we should be leading the pack like we were in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Henley.
So, with my career and my experience, most, I understand that the legislature is generally the holder of the purse strings, and so, mostly what we need to do is advocate for that increased per pupil funding, as Mr. Walker said, because if you don't advocate for that, there is no, there is no additional funding. You can do a lot of the community events, like you also mentioned the pumpkin patch. I hate to keep parroting you, but you mentioned the Seliger pumpkin patch. So, like little events like that, I mean, it starts little, but it's actually a huge event that provides school supplies for our instructors in the school district, and that school specifically. And so, those events are fantastic, but what I would like to champion is more work with the legislature, federal and actually state legislature, to try to increase that per pupil funding, because like Mr. Walker said, it's forty-sixth or forty-eighth, depending on the study. And I know everybody always says fiftieth, but we're not quite there, thank goodness, but we're getting, we're getting better. But we do need to increase that per pupil funding and increase, maintain the teacher's salaries and things like that. One thing that's been done very well in this district is it's been very competitive as far as salaries for the instructors and the teachers, which is, which allows this district to pull in a lot of really good teachers and classified staff as well, because that's so important for those students. If we don't have quality teachers, you know, the kids are not going to succeed. So, it doesn't matter how much money you throw at the problem if you don't have quality educators and classified staff to assist those students in success. And so, if you partner with those, with the legislature and champion for additional funding and are there all the time, I mean, I deal with that in my professional life, quite often, working through legislative budgets and the budget cycle. It's a very tight cycle, you know, they don't close the budget until, you know, the end of May, and then it's in, you know, Ju-, or July, it's in effect. So, I mean, the school district is very good at wrapping up the budget and making sure things are funded, so.
Thank you. We only have time for one more question before the closing statements, so we'll start with Ms. Sosa with this one, and this is a question from the audience. Chronic absenteeism is an issue nationwide and in Carson City with future implications. Do you have a plan to help with this in Carson City?
You know, like Mike said, there's a lot of technology available to us, and I was thinking the other day, why don't, if there's a lot of absences, why don't the parents have maybe an app? Maybe there's an app or something technology-wise that's implemented into maybe credits or some attendance or something like that to keep them kind of engaged into school curriculums? Lots of ideas to kind of keep that reduced. I'm definitely wanting to seek more into that and find out what we can do to resolve that and reduce the number of absences. That was my thought.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
You know, this is a very important issue, and it's something that we're tackling head-on, and I'm really thankful to say that we're not just doing this alone in the school district. We have a lot of partners, city leadership who have taken initiative and helped with incentives for students to attend school regularly. We have companies who have also been generously supporting these efforts, and as a school board, as a state board of us, school board associations, this is one of those top issues that we keep dealing with because if children are not in school, they're not learning. There's no, there's no replacing that, those foundational skills that the kid is missing. And so, we have to work with families that, there has been a change in perception since the COVID pandemic, and, you know, not to be disrespectful, but everybody thinks that online platforms are going to solve the, solve the problem, and there is no replacement for a highly qualified teacher in a classroom building a relationship with a child. These kids need to be in school, and we need to work with our community, and we need to make sure that that, we all need to be screaming it from the rooftop because we are going to depend on these children to run our society in a, you know, I see kids all the time, I have several kids with kids of their own in my school, and that makes me feel ancient. But it also reminds me that in a very short amount of time, I'm not going to be the one working in that school. You know, I'm, I'm going to want a highly qualified workforce out there that is innovative and finding solutions to tomorrow's problems that is going to keep our community thriving, and so we need our kids in school.
Thank you. Mr. Henley.
So, I was at a school board meeting, actually here in town, about six to eight weeks ago where this topic really did come up, and it mainly came up during the discussion about summer school and the summer school program and how successful it has been, because most of the children that seem to be attending summer school are those chronic absenteeism problems. And so, engaging in the community, like Mr. Walker said, and trying to get those additional incentives for those students, but also partnering with the families, because you never know what, what that chronic absenteeism is for. I can tell you from my personal experience when I was in high school, I was working forty hours a week because obviously I had a child in high school, and I was also going to school, and back then, maybe labor laws were a little bit looser, and so I was working till about one in the morning and then getting up and going to school the next morning. And I remember I ended up dropping a class at one point because I didn't really need it to graduate, and I wasn't doing well in it. So, I ended up dropping the class, and the teacher was really upset with me, and I remember talking to her, and she's like, well, if you just would have told me, we could have worked something out. So, having those partnerships and, you know, realizing that not every student is in the same situation as others, there are different needs for different groups. I a hundred percent agree that there is no replacement for in-class instruction from qualified professionals. The COVID pandemic basically proved that. I had my own daughter, my youngest one was in third grade, and listening to a computer all day was not going to work for her, so we homeschooled for that short period of time, even though the Carson City School District had great opportunities for her. That's what we chose at that time. But I think we need to work on that chronic absenteeism through incentives, through additional programs, and partnering with the families in the community to foster a better experience for them and find out maybe what's actually causing the root of their problems specifically. Each child's different, so.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson.
Like, like Dave said, a child that's not in school is not a child that's learning. There's, they're falling behind, no academic growth, and they're digging themselves a hole, basically, and that'll be challenging to come out of and recover from without a bunch of extra helps. I think an important thing to help kids realize too is, you know, sometimes they might get discouraged if they're not excelling and if they're not achieving in the same way academically as some of their peers, but success is not the same for everybody. There's a quote that I really like that says, be brave enough to be bad at something new. And I think that's one that a lot of kids could really learn from and grow from. A kid that is at school is a win regardless. Success is different for everyone. Some kids might be in AP and honors courses in National Honor Society, another kid might be a solid C student. That doesn't make one more successful than the other. The fact that they are there, the fact that they are showing up and being vulnerable enough to learn something new and to risk looking like a failure in front of their peers while they're struggling to learn something new, that is a kid that's succeeding, that is a kid that's going to go places, and that is a kid that wouldn't be developing that talent and that grit if they weren't in their seat. So, I don't, I don't know the solution to getting kids there, but I know making an environment that they want to be in and that where they feel accepted and where learning is the only thing they really need to worry about. feel accepted and where learning is the only thing they really need to worry about, that they're not concerned with a bunch of extra baggage that has to come in with them. If we can make it an environment where their one job is to be a student and to exceed and to excel in whatever way that looks for them, that is a win.
Thank you. And now to closing statements, two to three minutes, and Ms. Sosa.
Um, well, I may not have all the answers today. I am sure there's many issues and topics that I could educate myself on. I'm willing to ask questions and do the footwork and be an advocate for those in the community. I know people are wanting feedback, people are wanting answers and change and things like that. And hopefully I can, I can make that happen. I could do something to get that for the community. It was a pleasure to be here today, and it was my first time to be up in front of a stage in front of all these people. So thank you for allowing me to do that. And, and that's, that's it for me. That was my closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
You know, eight years ago, I ran for school board, and there were a few issues that were really driving my campaign. The district had received a big grant. And as a result, a lot of our educators, our best and our brightest teachers in a lot of cases, were being pulled out of the classroom and put into coaching positions. And this is when we started experiencing the teacher shortage. And as a result, we were having substitute teachers leading classrooms. And I felt that was wrong. Because if we don't have enough educators to fill the classrooms, then we shouldn't have educators doing jobs, planning curriculum in a district office. The most important job is the teacher in the school. And so I advocated to make sure that we changed those process, that process, which has changed. I also was disillusioned with a lot of the canned curriculum, scripted curriculum, which were, basically, we were giving teachers books, dividing kids up, and the curriculum was making some kids hate to read. That's a problem. And so we have updated our curriculum. We have updated our practices. And the focus is on putting highly qualified teachers in every single classroom. We have engaged with the community. We have engaged nationally to find, attract, retain the most highly qualified educators. And I'm proud to say that we are making progress. When you look at the achievement of Carson City students in comparison to the rest of the state, we are at the top of the list. Last year, there was a study that we were told that our students, when they went to university and college in this state, they received the least amount of remediation. So Carson City students, our teachers are preparing these kids. You, the families, are doing your work and giving these kids with that solid background that they can use to be successful in post-secondary life, in education, whatever they're going into. And so I just want to say that I promised to work hard back then, and I've done that every day as your trustee. I've done that on the State Board of Education. I've done that on your school board. I've done that in the community. Because most important job for me is making sure that these kids have the best life and the best future possible. So having said that, I would appreciate your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henley?
So in closing, I just want to kind of reiterate some of my experience and the things that I've done in the past, and kind of my history. You know, I have obviously a lot of ties to this community. I have connections within the district. As I said, my wife works for the district as a classified employee. My oldest daughter is an instructor at Carson Middle School, an English instructor. And my son and my youngest daughter, they will be graduating from the school districts. The, the home that I purchased was specifically purchased to stay in the same school district, in the same area, in the same schools that we're zoned for. I mean, I love this community. Additionally, in my professional career, I deal with a lot of people that have made some core choices in life. And unfortunately, a lot of them I knew when I was younger, went to school with, graduated from school. And I would like to assist the district in keeping the stability in the area, but also capturing these kids and making sure that they don't go down that same path and don't end up downstream with me. I would love to put myself out of business. I really don't want to be, you know, I, I love my career, but I also would love to never see, you know, youth going to correctional facilities and things like that. And that starts in the classroom and at home. If they have proper education and good teachers in their, and good families do, and partnerships with the school district, you know, they, they will never end up with law enforcement connections later on, or substance abuse, or those other things, you know. I'm, I'm really passionate about, you know, the youth in this community, in this area. And I just want to see it continue to succeed and continue the stability that we have in this district. It's, I would say the best district in this entire area, and I would say easily within the entire state. So I, I would just like to keep it stable and keep it going forward. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
All right. Got written remarks again. All right. Since becoming a mother twenty-one years ago, my focus has always been creating an environment where children can thrive, a place where youth can explore their passions, find their strengths, develop confidence, and gain an understanding of the value within them. This is evidence, by the way, that I have poured all my energy and spare time into all things youth, whether it's sports, the arts, schools, the community, they are my passion. I love an opportunity to be present, not just for my kids, but for their peers as well. I'm not seeking the seat to advocate for a political party or its agendas. I'm not seeking the seat to serve any outside influences. I am seeking the seat to do what I've always done, and that is to protect the environment where our children grow, learn, and develop. I'm here to advocate for them and them alone. While I've never sat political office, I have served in many leadership roles throughout the community, managing large volunteer staffs, even larger budgets, and thousands of kids. I'm not emotionally reactive. I am very logic-driven. I can take differing viewpoints and find common grounds to build from. I am firm in defending my viewpoints, but not so rigid that compromise is unreachable. I am organized, I am responsible, and I am dedicated to being a voice for our children. If you look around town at the signs that I have placed, one thing you will notice is that nearly all of them are in the front yards of homes. That's because almost all of my support comes from teachers and the thousands of families that I have impacted through my service to their children. Parents and teachers are in the trenches, ensuring a solid foundation for our children. They have seen me in action. They know my ability, and they know my heart. And I ask that you would join with them in supporting me in my pursuit of serving in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much to all of you. I'll say that at the end. Okay, we'll start on our final candidates for tonight. These are, these candidates are running for Nevada State Assembly District Forty, PK O'Neal and Catherine Ramsey. And we will start with Ms. Ramsey, since she's on the left, closest to me, with a opening statement of five minutes. Up to five minutes. You don't have to do the whole thing if you don't want to.
Yeah. In the interest of helping everyone stay awake, I'll try to keep it a little bit shorter. And thank you to everyone that did stay. I know these can be a little long, but it is important. And it is amazing to see everyone that does turn out. I've met a ton of wonderful people since I've been campaigning. I started campaigning last October, being inspired by my oldest that is in politics at a national level, national, for a congressional candidate. But if you aren't one of the people that I've met, allow me to introduce myself. And I'll read a little bit this time so I don't miss too much. I was raised by an ambitious single mom, well below the poverty line. To this day, I see very few government representatives like me, or most of the people that I've met in travel or business. Although Nevada is better represented than most, female voices are still underrepresented in all levels of our leadership, and the voices of those in poverty are often not heard at all. I hope to be that voice and a true public servant in the office. What an amazing time to be alive in America. There's an old proverb that says, could be a curse, says, may you live in interesting times. We certainly are. So many stories to tell our kids and our grandkids. I think we're up to the challenge, especially here in our state. We define independence. We are still the spirit of the West. Professionally, I bring a lot to the table. I have over thirty years of experience with grant compliance, the fascinating and exciting world of finance and budgeting. I have learned how to stretch a dollar while juggling staff, contentious employees and customers. The last ten years plus, I've been running my own trucking company. We travel coast to coast. Most of my drivers and I do not share all of our political views, but we love each other. They know my kids, they know my family, and every single day we get the job done, even when the truck is literally on fire. In the past, I have worked with FEMA projects. I've done budgeting for Hurricane Katrina cleanup. And I intend to audit our state legislature with the same fervor that I've used to audit businesses in the past, including when I worked for CPA firm in Alaska, which was an amazing experience with tons of stories, auditing cities, hospitals, and tribal entities. So that was a great experience. My top four issues that I see in our state that I feel we need immediate relief are assisting our educators, getting our crafts, artisanship, auto mechanic, all of our trades back into our schools, starting at a fairly early age, as early as elementary school if we can. I am a hundred percent an advocate for mental health improvements with our practitioners and getting the care out to every age group of our, of our residents. I just got endorsed today. I was extremely excited by the Nevada Psychological Association. As I said, I've been campaigning since last October, but I actually registered in January. This was my first official, here, you can use our logo. So that was really exciting for me. Affordable housing is high on my list of passions. I have three kids that are in their twenties that cannot afford a home, can't even afford to rent an apartment with another person. We have to get immediate relief, whether it's here in our, especially here in our city. If we want better, better services for our kids and our grandkids in the schools, their teachers need to be able to afford housing where they work. And lastly, especially because of my fascinating budgeting and finance background, I believe in transparency and accountability in city budgeting. I believe we can break everything down into a two-page document that explains, here's where the money came from, here's where the money went, here's the shortfall, and what do we do about it. That's me in a nutshell. And I would very much appreciate your vote, but I love all the support of everyone that's come out to different things and seeing everyone's faces. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neal?
I want to thank you, Ms. McQuary, for monitoring tonight. Also Nancy Scott, the president and the League of Women Voters, for sponsoring this candidate's forum, and express my appreciation to all of you who have stuck with us tonight and are still here. But particularly, I got to thank my wife for being here. She's had an extremely last couple busy days. So I, I do appreciate that for her sticking with me. I'm going to warn, some of you have probably heard this before, so you can take a four-minute nap. For the rest of you, I'm going to say, I'm PK O'Neal, the current Assemblyman for District Forty and the Assembly Minority Leader. Over my prior three terms, I have worked to earn your trust and support. I am asking for the privilege to continue representing you. Prior to my time in the legislature, I served the state of Nevada for thirty years in law enforcement with the Nevada Department of Public Safety. Nancy and I have been married for over twenty-seven years now. We are empty nesters with four children, grown children, and six grandchildren who are spread across this world. Together, we enjoy traveling to visit our children, touring on our motorcycle the country about, and volunteering with our church and the various nonprofit organizations. I graduated from Sierra Nevada College, now known as UNR, at Lake Tahoe, GO PAC, with a business, a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management. I retired as a division chief at the Nevada Department of Public Safety. Upon retirement, I began work as a consultant with the International Association Chiefs of Police and the FBI. Additionally, I served four years as a commissioner on the State Ethics Commission. I am currently on the Carson Tahoe Health Systems Board of Directors and past chairman of the Salvation Army of Carson City and Douglas County. I believe this is why I'm endorsed by so many of our community leaders, organizations, and businesses. I want to continue to build upon and diversify Nevada's economy, reduce burdensome regulations, improve our medical and mental health services, respect our veterans, support our first responders, and fix our challenged education system. We need policies which promote Nevada as the place to conduct business, raise a family, and enjoy the beauty of our great state. Nevada is and has been my home for over forty-four years. You deserve a public servant who is here for you. One of my greatest enjoyments as your assembly is assisting constituents with various concerns. Those issues have ranged from assisting a man in hospice with clarifying his last dying wish, to just speaking with voters who want to vent. During my three previous terms, I have been able to pass legislation improving the quality of life for our veterans, senior citizens, and those with disabilities, suspend property tax fees for parts of Story County, remove onerous fees for veterans organizations, have Nevada join a national compact for emergency medical personnel, and strengthen the punishment for animal abuse. Additionally, I've been able to provide financial support to FISH, the Stewart Indian School and Museum, Nevada State Prison Preservation Society, Special Olympics, and the Boys and Girls Club. And one of my proudest achievements was this last legislative session where I was able to get AB 346 passed, which incentivizes state agencies to save money, not spend their entire budget so they won't be penalized. I look forward, with your support, to the honor of continuing to represent you in the Assembly. For those that fell asleep, it's time to wake up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to questions. There'll be two minutes per speaker. So we'll start with Mr. O'Neal for the first one. Each Assembly Representative is allotted a certain number of, a limited number of bill draft requests or BDRs. What are your BDR priorities?
As a returning state assemblyman, I'm allotted ten BDRs. One of the first, I've already submitted four of them. One of the first ones that I submitted had to do with the commerce tax. It was originally set up to have a threshold, no one was affected, or an automatic, four million dollars before it would take effect on a business that was earned in the state of Nevada. So if you made widgets, sold them all out of state, you didn't pay anything. But inflation has come in, and so I have submitted a bill to tie that four million dollars to the inflationary rate of the Western Pacific CPI. So the small businesses, which we did want to exempt from that tax, will continue to be exempted. I'm also looking at another bill for e-Verify that state contractors and subcontractors use the state, the national computerized system for verifying that their employees are allowed to work and are legal to work in this country. I'm looking at a veterans' bill dealing with suicides and prevention and dealing with that when they have weapons. And that they can turn their weapons in to a gun dealer who can hold them after seeking assistance and treatment. They can go in and receive those weapons back if they want them without any penalties or endangerment to that gun store owner. I'm looking at some other bills dealing with the law enforcement, whoops, law enforcement system and improving our mental health. I want to also, I'll put in the bill for, to do the nurses compact once again, so we have more nurses coming to Nevada, along with physical therapists, dental assistants, and dentists are all separate bills. And there may be several more, but thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramsey, what are your BDR proposals?
For the audience, would someone mind spelling out?
For the audience, would someone mind spelling out exactly what BDR stands for?
I'll do it again. Bill, Bill Draft Request.
Bill Draft Request. As a mom to six kids total, education is close to my heart. If the food security or free school lunches for breakfast and lunch did not get passed this time, that would be one that I would say the timing was off and needed to be revisited. As a trucking company owner, I believe we need to immediately address our corridor between Reno and Vegas. It is unsafe for high traffic, which we get quite a bit of during the summer. And I'd also like to address the clearing of the roads between the passes. Not only the issue that we recently saw with the electric vehicle and the battery that it was carrying catching fire and closing that pass down for two days. We have to make, and I believe we would strongly benefit economically from opening that corridor up in better ways, better for our revenue, better for our safety, better for transportation and tourism, bringing more people up to us in a safe manner, especially during the winter season. I'd also like to see a bill draft request to coincide with the master plan, showing very much that Carson City is the capital. We need more assistance with our revenue here. We need more support with payment in lieu of taxes so that things like our roads have revenue streams that are not just Carson City resident pocketbooks. Those are three of the things that I'd like to address. I have no idea, they don't let us know how many we get as an incoming person. Six?
Six.
Ah, not bad. I'm sure I can come up with more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Ramsey. The recent wildfire in Washoe Valley is a vivid example of the effects of climate change. What policies do you believe should be implemented at the state level to reduce the incidence of wildfires in Nevada and help our communities adapt to that and to other effects of climate change? Two minutes.
Thank you. That's a very good question that I did get from some conservation groups. And my response is that we are low water retention state. We need more first responders. We're currently roughly in some areas around 50%. We need more resources. Wildfires are going to occur. If we do our controlled burns, we can mitigate some of that. But at the end of the day, aware, more awareness, in the case specifically of the Davis Fire, more awareness and monitoring of campfires outside of, or in a burn season would have gone a long way, them having the camp areas better staffed possibly. But otherwise, we're low water retention. We can't make the clouds come. We do need more support and staffing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
I'll say staffing is one level or issue we've got. The big problem is, is the finances of it, and also finding people that want to serve. I've noticed in law enforcement, fire, first responders, medical teams, even in physicians, nurses, for some reason, people do not want to go into community service organizations or businesses. But speaking specifically about wildfires, the state has already offered and assisted with clearing and taking off, making your defensible spaces, clearing out some of those shrubs and stuff that can catch fire so easily and grow into a larger incidence. But the biggest thing is, is being offered by the private enterprise, which is the solution to so much. They've had reached out and Southwest Gas has looked at cleaning away things. Nevada Energy cleaning away from their transformers. That's all private enterprise that has worked forward to reduce the unfortunate incidents in wildfire. The one part is, is as my opponent did say, people have to be, face up to some of the responsibilities. When they say no fires outside of protected areas, that means no fires outside of protected areas. And that very often has been the incidents that we've had that have started. Several years ago, we had a gentleman who dumped his hot ashes out in the trash can, and that fire went all the way from Washoe Valley up into the south end of Reno and killed a person. That was easily preventable. And that's what we have to do is also look at self-responsibility and education. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, I've lost track, I think.
Me.
Thank you. So this is a short but crucial question.
No such thing as short.
Well, you.
That's like saying there's an easy bill.
Your answer can be. What are the most critical issues facing Nevada?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty second time. You know, to me, it's the economy. And the economy is an easy answer to give you, but it's a very complex answer with many parts to it. The economy is drawing businesses in. Drawing businesses in, we've got to have appropriate education, starting with K through 12, but also at the higher end too. UNR, UNLV, the Nevada State University, our college, community colleges. Those are all part of helping the economy. We need to diversify. And in the last several years, we have been working diligently, and I think, and doing an excellent job at diversifying our economy. For those of you remember when we were just dependent upon gaming and mining, come recessions, our, in our economy looked like an EKG. It went up during the good years, and it dropped like a rock during the bad years. And we were the last nationally to always recover because of so dependent upon that spending, that free spending for gaming and mining catching up on their needs. So with the diversification, when you look at Tahoe Regional Industrial Complex, you look at Apex Industrial Complex down in North Las Vegas, they've been drawing in other businesses, a lot of them being clean businesses, IT businesses, server farms, businesses, safe energy or green energy businesses. That's where we have diversified. That's where we need to provide a workforce development for them and education and opportunities. And we have, and we will continue to do that to improve our economy. Thus such, we'll be making Nevada a better place to work, live, educate, and enjoy the beauty of our state.
Thank you. Ms. Ramsey, critical issues.
I believe the four that I stated during the intro, those are the top issues to me are education, getting trades and crafts back into the school, mental health improvement, improvements for our providers, getting them paid, whether it's through the Affordable Healthcare Act or through any other type of insurance. But primarily, the first thing that I think would, would truly push things through is affordable or low-income housing. The master plan is looking at a lot more mixed-use permits. Helping fix and ease that crisis that we currently have in our city helps our homeless veterans. It helps our teachers that can't afford to stay where the kids they're serving are located. It helps our first responders move back into our area. Overall, our economy thrives when people have a stable home that they know they won't have to move out of in a year, when they know they can hang their pictures on the wall, and that if they get a new puppy and it pees on the rug, that the landlord's not going to keep their entire deposit. People need to know that they have stability in their community. We need to find a solution for that immediately. We're losing a lot of good, well-educated new employees in our area because we have no housing to offer them for them to educate our kids and our grandkids and help serve in our hospitals. And even in retail, I've noticed quite a bit more this last year and ever since COVID, there are so many restaurants you can't go sit down past the hour of eight o'clock, or ones here in town that close at seven if they're open at all because we aren't paying our lower-income workers enough to survive. So those are the, tied to the economy, but the immediate issues.
Thank you. And you, we'll start the, we'll start the next question with you. How do you propose we increase access to high-quality healthcare and recruit and retain healthcare professionals, especially in our rural areas?
Wonderful. My background, a little over a decade of it, is in the medical field. I will try not to speak too long. My specialty with the CPA firm in Alaska was auditing billing and in a private and public area. One major way that they helped retain and obtain the most brilliant talent was by offering incentives coming out of college. They paid for your first, or they paid off your student loan, or they paid for your housing while you did your residency in-state. I believe we can offer those programs. We have an amazing college at UNR. We have a good medical branch at our Western Nevada, up here at North Carson. I believe we can expand those programs, bring in more people to a vibrant community that is one of the still nicest, small-town-feeling capitals, I believe, in this nation. People want to be here, and I believe we can obtain them and retain them.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
I've been trying to get the state to join the Nurses Compact for the last several years. The Nurses Compact is a national organization of states that gather together, sets standards, and allows the nurses to transfer from one state to another without having to start all over again. It unfortunately has been argued and defeated by certain unions who see it as a strike buster. Now, I offer this to you. When a nurses group wants to strike a hospital, they're required to notify the hospital ten days in advance, notify the nursing board ten days in advance so preparations can be made that patients are still cared for. It is not a strike breaker. It is strictly, for some reason, that they like to prevent nurses from coming to Nevada. I don't understand it. We have a shortage of all medical providers. That's why I was able, last session, to pass a bill having the state join a compact for emergency medical service providers, basically EMTs, those lower assistants in nursing or in medical care. The state already provides tuition assistance if a doctor will stay here in Nevada after graduating from UNR, UNLV, Toro Medical School, et cetera, if practice here in the state. We increase that if they'll go out to the rural counties and do their practicing out there. We have, the state has continually addressed that, and the hospitals themselves are also recruiting nationally for the same doctors, nurses, et cetera, that other hospitals and states are going for. So it is truly a challenging situation, but we offer a wonderful community to them to come and live and work in. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next question, we start with you. What policies would you promote at the state level to increase the availability of quality affordable housing?
The first one is we're already in progress. Tell the feds to give us our land. One of the, you know, when you go to buy the house, whatever, there's several components to what made that widget cost X amount. The first one for a house is the land that it's gonna sit on. Unfortunately, 85% roughly of this state is owned by the federal government. Even here in Nevada, or in Carson City, excuse me, the majority of the land of Carson City is owned by the federal government. It's getting them to release that and not taking years to do it. That's one of the first issues we've got. And then it's availability of a workforce. We have and have been working, the governor has issued his, an executive order on one of his first days in office to have all the agencies look at the various regulations, work at reducing them. I think next session, you're gonna see one of the big issues is reducing the onerous regulations for a house to be built, and including for the workforce on what they're required. An electrician, we're short electricians. For an electrician to come to Nevada right now, he's been working ten years, she's been working ten years in another state, they've got to come here and stall, start all over again as if they just started their business. That's part of it. So we need workforce. And then it's the supplies. The piping, the wood, the material to build that house, to get it shipped here also has increased dramatically, all going towards the cost of a house. But the first part is getting land. Then we can start talking about the rest of the issues and reducing some of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramsey, affordable housing.
Yes. Yeah, I agree with Mr. O'Neill. The amount of land owned, not just by federal, but also state here in our city is exorbitant. For those of you that go to Toastmasters with me, that was our word this week. It's eighty, roughly 80%. They do, state property does not pay property taxes, and in many cases, don't pay a payment in lieu of taxes. The master plan is addressing some of these issues, but I believe that needs to, it needs to go through faster to ease this issue with mixed use for properties that are downtown. In addition to releasing or pressuring, when possible, some of the privately held land that we have that's in prime locations in Carson City, like the Ormsby House, the abandoned Kmart area that has been like that for well over a decade. There are lands available that are not, are not being used to their potential. And they're in great locations, especially the Ormsby House, some of the state land where the children's homes were. If they're not going to be remediated, they need to be released for use within two years, six-month programs, two-year release. If you're not going to use it or sell it, make it available for the city to use and get property tax and retail use for. I completely agree about reducing the regulations, speeding up inspections.
Twenty-five seconds.
A lot of that is very prohibitive. As far as the workforce, that's where I'd love to see mentorships come back into our schools from elementary school up, getting them out there doing masonry, construction, and everything in between. But especially one thing on education is materials. I believe that we need to start encouraging our kids from a young age to look at all the alternative materials here in our state that we can use instead of maybe more traditional materials.
Thank you.
Am I allowed rebuttal? Are we gonna have rebuttal or not?
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, thank you. First of all, I want to talk to you about what state property is here, and specifically in Carson City. That's property that's offices. That's offices for state employees who work here, who buy their food here, who buy their gas here, who buy their cars here. That is not land that is being held back. We are building upon that land and working on it. So that is where the state employees help. When we have state land here, it's the federal land that is sitting around and not providing the needs for our employees. As to the OH and to Kmart, that's private property. It's private enterprise. If they want to sit on it, they can sit on it. I do not think the state should be coming in and interfering with private property.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Ms. Ramsey, am I right? Or is it?
Yeah, it's me.
Okay, with Mr. O'Neill.
I'll continue.
What measures should this Nevada legislature take to balance the economic rewards of mining for resources such as lithium with the potential adverse environmental impacts and disturbance of sacred lands of Nevada's indigenous citizens?
I'll let you have it, never mind.
She'll get her turn.
You know, it's a real interesting question in the sense of, we want green energy. We need green energy. But yet, it seems to be, we don't want it in our backyards. We've got the lithium mines out there. We have geothermal, which I- We have geothermal, which I think is an outstanding 24/7 opportunity to produce clean electric energy, but yet we set unreasonable limitations, all of them, I feel. Some of the same people that want green energies so, so much are also the same ones that are coming forward, arguing about it's too close to the Speckle Hen, et cetera, and what are you going to do? And then when they've offered, when the private enterprise have offered actions to protect the Speckle Hen, whatever it may be, that's still argued. We have argued the Thacker Pass, Adyemphinitum, we have presented, we, meaning the private companies, have presented their ways and their mannerisms to protect the sacred lands of the indigenous people, of the Indians, also down south for the flowers, and it is still not acceptable. You've got to make a choice. Do you want green energy? Do you want to be dependent upon China? You want to be dependent upon Venezuela? Socialist communist countries to provide the lithium for your batteries, for your green energy? Or do you want to make Nevada the supply? Make Nevada's economy the one that people look to, to supply and solve the issues that are facing our country? So I think there has been a balance and we have to find a little more reasonableness in it. The courts have discussed it, the courts have given, and people keep coming back with new arguments over and over again. We could talk about it with 580 right here years ago, why it continued for so long because of these arguments.
Thank you. Ms. Ramsey. What question again, since it's long? Just for fun. What measures should the Nevada legislature take to balance the economic rewards of mining for resources such as lithium with the potential adverse environmental impacts and disturbance of sacred lands of Nevada's indigenous citizens?
I agree with the fact that we have to be a lot more Yimby than NIMBY. We have to be more yes in my backyard. We need to bring many of the goods and services that we've outsourced and lost back into our country and that Nevada can lead the way in lithium. I believe that we are smart enough and strong enough to make sure that that happens in a way that is safe, that can stay as safe as possible. And because I did live in Alaska for three years and I saw the permanent fund dividend work for the oil companies and for each resident to get a couple thousand dollars every year on a graduated scale, I know that we can do the same thing here for lithium mining that does occur and make it money that stays in our state and helps our, all of our many needs that we have. And we can lead the way in that technology. As far as environmental impact, I addressed that, I'm sorry, I kind of, because I benefited from permanent fund dividend, I start taking that trip down memory lane, got kids their first video games with money that they even got as a five-year-old and a seven-year-old. Every single person can benefit from that. I know a great kid that's running against Mr. Amadee has a solid plan for that. I'm hoping regardless of whether he wins or loses, that that's a plan he tries to get in place ahead of the game. Where possible, I think we need to pull back as much of that property and do as much of that work ourselves here in Nevada, keeping those companies local, building them where we can, and creating those resources and jobs here in state.
Thank you. We only have time for one audience question and it's pretty relevant to these other questions because it has to do with funding. So, Mr. O'Neil. After hearing the school board candidate remind-
No, it's my turn. He says it's my turn. Yours is mine. We're just tired.
Okay, it's your turn. After hearing the school board candidate remind us that our per pupil funding is 46 or 48, whatever, in the nation, what are your thoughts on increasing that funding?
What are my thoughts on increasing what?
On increasing the funding for schools, for pupil funding for public schools.
That would, that would be an easy, obviously, we need more funding. The, the fact that we're so low is, I'm not sure how we got here, but you can see it. I volunteer, my littlest guy is 11. He currently goes to Carson Middle. I haven't been, been allowed by him yet to be cool enough to volunteer, but when he was still in elementary school last year, I volunteered twice a week because his classroom had twice as many students as I believe his teacher was comfortable with. Our, I believe with that transparency and accountability with where the money is going, especially parents and residents in the city can see that our kids are really our top priority. They are, they are the future. I will not start singing a Whitney Houston song, but they really are. They are going to be building our roads. They're going to be keeping our buildings together. They're going, they need to be learning electrical and craftsmanship, but they will also be, be running our country. They need a seat at the table for running our country. They need the education to get there. 11,000 per child is way too low. We need recruitment of our teachers. We need to tell them and they're valuable. In America, money talks. You have to pay them what they're worth. They're professionals that deserve to be paid at a professional level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
Education is important to Nevada, but it's not just money alone that's going to solve the problem. We just added, last session, $2 billion, that's B, billion dollars to our state budget for education. We have a $12 billion education budget across the state going K through 12. We have increased the spending per pupils. We've added more money to the ESLs, minorities, those students that are, need additional services. And Clark County has just recently announced that they're $12 million short. What we need is accountability and fortunately, last session, we passed a bill just for that where the state can go in now and audit the school boards on their actions and look at why. They can report a $12 million oops mistake, sorry about that, give us more money. We have heard that over and over again. And as to money alone solving the issue, I offered to you Massachusetts, which has some of the highest spending rates in the country per pupil with some very poor performance levels. Utah has some of, ranks down with Nevada on the amount of money spent per pupil, but has much higher education levels they have with their students. So it isn't money alone that's solved. And I've heard this over again, just give us more money and the problem is solved. Well, we just gave more money and it's still not enough. So my answer is, when it's enough, enough. We have given the money to them. The schools also have their local property taxes to supplement and support them. It's how it's being used. We have got to look at education in a different manner than money alone.
And we're out of time. Thank you. So now we have our closing, closing statements. Two, one to two minutes of speaker and starting with Mr. O'Neil.
I'm going to give you a minute back, I bet you. Again, I want to thank you all for sponsoring, the Women Legal Voters, for sponsoring this forum. I would like to thank you, the constituents of Assembly District 40, for being with us tonight. Together, we can work for a better tomorrow and a better Nevada. I am PK O'Neil. I want to work with you to do that. We have been doing it. I want to continue doing that. I would appreciate your support and your vote in helping to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Ramsey.
Yes, thank you to everyone that stayed very much and very much to the legal women voters for everything that you do in our community. You are forces of nature. So, that being said, I can do this job with no issue. I believe my background and experience brings a lot to the table. I just need a seat. People need relief now. We don't have time to wait on political flex and political gridlock. We need to move forward. I will fight for the people in our city. I believe that Carson City is, again, one of the best cities in our nation and very much so here in the state of Nevada. I believe that I can build bridges. I work doing diplomacy all day with some cranky truck drivers and all of the customers in between, as well as juggling six kids from, from age ranges 11 all the way to 33. We are an independent state. I know that we can find solutions to move forward and work together. I appreciate your support and your vote. If I don't win this time, you will see me again. If not for this position, whichever one I can, I will continue to run and fight. But thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes tonight's candidate forum. I do want to thank all the candidates, Brewery Arts Center, and our sponsors, The Nevada Appeal and KUNR. The Nevada Appeal will post videos of all the forums on the Nevada Appeal YouTube website. And don't forget the next two forums on Monday, October 14th and Wednesday, October 17th. Thank you.